Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's county council meeting. We will begin with our invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance. Our invocation tonight is from Sister Carol Boshard, who is from Sisters of the Most Precious Blood, and then I will lead us in our pledge of allegiance. If you'd stand and remove your caps, please.
In a reading from the Book of Kings, God says to Solomon, "Ask something of me, and I will give it to you." How will you answer God's questions tonight if He asks you the same thing? Well, you can think about that tonight as you go home. I'm not here to examine any consciences; I'm just here to pray with you and for you. Do you remember Solomon's answer to God? He says, "Give your servant an understanding heart to judge your people and to distinguish right from wrong." So that is my prayer for all of you as you consider the items on the agenda tonight. God, please give these county council members understanding hearts that they may make decisions that will be beneficial for all the citizens of St. Charles County: the black, the white, the immigrants, the refugees, the poor, the unemployed, the homeless, and all the citizens of St. Charles County. We ask this in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Call the roll, please. Here. Here.
Councilmember Dave Hammond.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Ehlum.
Here.
Councilmember Terry Hollander.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Klinghammer.
Here.
Councilmember John White.
Here. Mr. Hammond.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to request to move Resolution 1707 next on the agenda.
Second. Motion's made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The resolution has been moved up. Would you like to read the resolution, please?
Absolutely. Sponsored by council as a whole, Resolution 1707, a resolution recognizing and congratulating the O'Fallon Chamber of Commerce and Industries on its achievement of being the top chamber in the country, whereas the St. Charles County Council is pleased to recognize organizations in the community who give their time and talents to improve the quality of life for all citizens of St. Charles County, and whereas the O'Fallon Chamber of Commerce and Industries is a not-for-profit membership organization for business that works to improve the economic environment of the community through grassroots efforts, and whereas the O'Fallon Chamber of Commerce and Industries works with businesses to build relationships and to provide value to its members and the community, and whereas the O'Fallon Chamber of Commerce and Industries was recently nominated for the Chamber of the Year Award and was recognized as a top chamber in the country, and whereas the O'Fallon Chamber of Commerce and Industries is a tremendous asset to the community that it serves. Now therefore, be resolved by the county council of St. Charles County, Missouri, as follows. Section 1, the St. Charles County Council hereby recognizes the O'Fallon Chamber of Commerce and Industries for the impact it makes in our community.
Do we have any questions or comments about this resolution? Good, then I can make one. Aaron, would you please come up front? So last year, for those of you who don't know, the O'Fallon Chamber of Commerce and Industries made it to the top three of the chambers of their category in the entire country. Actually, was it international last year as well?
Oh, includes Canada, so yes.
It include... We're taking it where we can, brother.
That's right.
So ladies and gentlemen, I would like for you to behold the Super Bowl of Chamber of Commerce trophies.
Woo!
This is Aaron Williams. Would you like to say anything about this?
I would.
Fire away.
Thank you, first of all, for the proclamation. We can't tell you how honored we are. I want to introduce my team here. Nina D'Angelo is our Director of Member Engagement. Kathy Bound is our Administrative Assistant. Brenda Louder is our Chairman of the Board this year, and Mia Trout is our Communications Director for the Chamber. So just to let you guys know the process that this takes, that starts in February with an operational survey that we do every year, and that's how we benchmark ourselves on how we're doing for our membership, for budgeting reasons, whatever it may be, if our market penetration is where it should be, and we can benchmark ourselves against all the other chambers in the United States and Canada. From there, if four of the five categories, financial administration, membership, impact, are above average, then you get the opportunity to apply. When you apply, there's four sections, and one of the sections has two parts in it, and I'm going to talk about those for a second. But it's everything from how many board members do you have, what's the percentage of each industry represented, what's the engagement of the folks in our chamber. Some lovely chamber members here. So all of those things, and they ask you to submit two programs that you've done in the past year, and we submitted both our Manufacturing Day, which a lot of folks in this room have been an integral part of, and we also included our growo'fallon.org website, which again, a lot of people in this room have been a big part of. Both of those programs, and the reason that I wanted to talk about them is both of those programs just include so much collaboration, which is, I think, what makes our chamber so successful, is that we're always looking for ways that people can collaborate together and build our community up. So from that packet, you get selected for a finalist. So even though you've submitted this big binder application, you just get to be a top-three finalist at that point. We are honored, obviously, to be top-three in the country. And then, the third prong is that Brenda was kind enough to join us in Nashville, Tennessee for the annual conference, where she and I interviewed with four other Chamber of the Year recipients from years past, and had a 45-minute interview for what we've done for our community, and asked a lot of questions that we hopefully... Well, obviously, we're able to answer, okay, I guess. But from there, that's how they chose the Chamber of the Year. So we're super proud to represent O'Fallon and St. Charles County and to be able to bring this home. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Let's call the roll.
A resolution recognizing and congratulating the O'Fallon Chamber of Commerce and Industries on its achievement of being the top chamber in the country. Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Aaron, would you come back up so I can officially give this to you? See, I'm learning. It only took me through the second half of the year to realize that we have to pass these before I can hand them out. Could we get a picture, please? We can get Uncle Dave in the background here. This is the biggie. Congratulations again. Thanks very much. Good job. All right, now back to our regularly scheduled program. We have a public presentation tonight with our St. Charles County Police Captain Chris Hunt. If you haven't heard, there's a solar eclipse coming. It may have sneaked by you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I intended on wearing my eclipse glasses tonight when I did this, but you can't see out of them, so...
But we would like to see you in them, so you know...
I'll be more than happy to put them on.
That is awesome.
Obviously, I'm here tonight to talk to you about the solar eclipse that we're expecting on August 21st. Emergency management is kind of taking the lead in this event, and I don't know if we can get the slides up on the screen, but I'll go through what we're expecting and what we're looking for as far as the eclipse goes. So around 11:00, around 1:15 in the afternoon on the 21st, we're expecting at the start, get dim outside. For about 90 seconds, you'll see the sun pass, or the moon pass in front of the sun. The northern part of the county won't get the total eclipse, but the southern, southwestern part will. So the folks in Augusta and Defiance and south of those areas are going to get the best effect of the solar eclipse, and what we're expecting is an influx into the state between 300,000 and 1.2 million people. For us here in St. Charles County, we're expecting between 20,000 and 30,000 visitors, and we know that based off of hotel reservations in the county, some of the chatter that's on the Internet, and the blog sites for these solar eclipses. So we're expecting a pretty large influx of folks in the county. So between 11:30 and 1 o'clock in the afternoon, that's where we're expecting the largest crowds and everybody preparing for the eclipse. We've closed, we've closed three parks: Bromoseck, Klondike, and Quail Ridge. I'll cover that in just a few minutes, but to give you an idea of what we're expecting beyond the parks, these are a few of the events that are posted on the Internet and social media and local media of the events that are going on around the county. Some are in the winery, some are in the city parks, but we expect a lot of people to participate in this event. Traffic we're expecting on the state roads and on the lettered highways, we're expecting because those are two-lane roads and the county parks are on those highways, we're expecting a traffic jam, especially after the event takes place. So going in, it might be a little bit easier because people are going to be spaced out when they want to get to the parks, but afterwards, there's going to be a dump of traffic. It's going to be like leaving the ballgame, so we're just going to ask people to be patient. We're working with, we're trying to work with MODOT, Missouri State Highway Patrol. We don't know what their plans are right now for the highways, the state highways, but we expect that they're going to have some plans here shortly. So the other thing we looked at is out-of-state travelers. For most people that are not living in the path of the eclipse across the United States, they have no idea that this is happening. So we have two interstates that run through our county, and we expect there to be some traffic issues on the interstates when it gets dark outside at 1:30 or 1:15 in the afternoon, so we expect some stoppages there. I'm pretty confident that MODOT is going to have some signage up across the state, Interstate 70, letting people know that it's coming. So the three county parks that we've closed, like I said, is Bromoseck, Klondike, and Quail Ridge. The Parks Department gave out 1,000 tickets for each park, and those have, it's sold out, so all parks are going to be maxed out at 1,000 participants, or 1,000 visitors per park. So those, like I said, those parks are closed. The county departments that are involved in the planning stages of this and the safety aspect of it are the Parks Department, obviously, emergency management, and the Police Department, the Executive's Office, Facilities, Emergency Communications, which is the Police and Fire Dispatch, and the Highway Department. So the public safety partners that we have partnered with are the O'Fallon Police Department, Central County Fire and Rescue, the Ambulance District, Wentzville and Cotterville Fire Protection Districts, Augusta Fire Protection District. I know Numeli is involved now, so every fire district that is in our county is participating in making sure that everybody is safe during this event. So the additional staff that we're going to have is we're going to have dispatchers at each park, we're going to have a command post at each park. Also, we're going to have the Park Rangers, Facilities Personnel, the police helicopter's going to be up, as well as volunteers from the Police Academy and our emergency management volunteers, who we rely heavily on during these events. The EOC is going to be activated, it's going to be staffed with the emergency operation or emergency management personnel. They'll be monitoring all three command posts from the Emergency Operations Center, so we'll have kind of a view of everything that's going on in the parks as it's happening. So the Patrol Division of the County Police Department is prepared. We have, every day shift officer is not off that day. They are working, they are scheduled, and we'll have them scattered throughout the parks and in the areas of the county where we expect the most people. We will also have plainclothes officers in each park walking through the crowds, and we also will have a police supervisor at each, at each park in the event that one is needed. So fire and EMS is, like I said, is going to be at each park. We expect it to be hot because it's going to be mid-August, so we'll have cooling stations set up with water. Fire and EMS personnel will be able to address any heat issues or injury issues or any incident that comes up that relates to them. We have backup power sources for the parks. Like I said, we have a mobile command post at each, at each park. So, and that will house dispatchers and the incident commander for each park, and that will be the hub for public safety and EMS. So that's it in a nutshell. My presentation obviously lasted longer than the eclipse, but I welcome any questions that you may have or suggestions and anything.
Sounds like put together a good plan to keep everybody safe.
There's a lot of volunteers that are, a lot of assets that have gone into preparing and making sure this event goes off without a hitch. So we don't like, we don't know what to expect. We've never had this, at least in our lifetimes, we've never had an event like this, so...
Overcast could be an issue for us.
Yeah. If it does, if it does rain or storm, then obviously the event's off, so... But we're hoping that's not the case, so we're hoping everybody can enjoy it.
Chief, what was it like last time this happened?
I was young, so I barely remember, but I remember coming out of the cave.
If you hadn't stood up, I wouldn't have done that, but it just had to go. Does anyone have any questions for Captain Hunt? All right, thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
Nice job.
We'll move on to our public hearing on traffic regulations. This is talking about the stop sign request to establish a four-way stop at the intersection of St. Andrews Drive and Sawyer Boulevard. Is there anyone here to speak?
I have three people that actually filled out cards, but I know there are others, so do you want me to call those forward, or...
I just came to talk.
Well, your timing is impeccable, sir.
First-time councilperson, I've never been here before, so what's the protocol? State my name, anything like that?
If you could do your name and let us know your feelings on this traffic regulation.
My name is Joel Leath. I live on St. Andrews Drive, and I've lived there about three years.
Okay.
I walk my dog twice a day in the neighborhood, relatively popular guy in the neighborhood, actually, my dog is, but it's a subdivision with villas, single-family homes, and town homes, and I've noticed increasing traffic on Sawyer Boulevard in particular, and people are just zipping through. It's real wide, and it's easy to drive fast on, I understand, but I've actually stood down where the subdivision goes into the old St. Charles Hills, and most people that are driving through there, well, not most, over 50% are going to St. Charles Hills, which is no big deal. I just like them to slow down a little bit. I've got a bunch of old people, aging people, living in the villas, that are walking their dogs, too, and if you see, it's a divided road in the entrance to the subdivision, they've got this huge grass growing way up. It's beautiful, flowers, I mean, it's very nice, but in the summertime, you cannot see a flying car driving. What I don't want to have happen is somebody get hit there, killed, before they put a stop sign, so...
Okay.
And my personal belief is, there's two other streets that join or perpendicular to Sawyer, and I think if you put a stop sign at the one intersection, people will stop there and then hit the throttle and go the rest of the way down. The speed limit is 25, and you know, I can tell when people are going more than 25 because I know, you know, there's little seams in the road, you can hear your tires when you're going to speed limit, and these are going click, 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 I mean, they're flying, and it's dangerous. It's a public safety issue, and you know, cars traveling at a higher rate of speed are also a lot louder, and you know, a lot of people are complaining. There's one guy that lives on the corner, he can't even back out of his driveway for fear of his life because people are just driving too fast, so that's why I came. I hope we get the stop sign.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Would you ask Joel to please define "old people"?
People older than I am?
Oh, wow.
And that's when the wheels came off the bus, Your Honor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm giving you a head start so you can get out before they catch you. Carol, do you want to, the other folks who are going to speak on this stuff?
Jack Greer.
I'm one of the old folks. I own one of the villas in St. Andrews, 316 Glasgow, and I am here to strongly support that four-way stop. There are several reasons, as he mentioned some of it there. The visibility is very tough there, going home or even coming out of the subdivision. Today, I just got about rear-ended, and that's almost a daily occurrence there. The speeds along there, as he said, 25 miles, I would say the average speed is about 40. There's a higher influx of elderly in that area, so with the limited visibility, the higher speeds, the older folks personally witnessing some of the close calls, I really do hope that you put that four-way stop sign in there. It's been needed, I've been there over five years, it's been needed a long time, so before somebody gets hurt, let's do that.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, Carol.
Sam Byrne.
Thank you for this opportunity to also support the four-way stop sign and to reiterate what has already been said. I live on Glasgow also, and when leaving Glasgow, we must come up St. Andrews to Sawyer. And looking to our right for traffic that comes from West Clay, the traffic comes up an incline, and there's a slight curve. And now there are currently yield signs on St. Andrews, both directions. There's no signs on Sawyer. The yield signs may as well already be stop signs because you have to stop in order to see if there's any traffic on Sawyer. And on the opposite direction, on traffic that is heading towards West Clay, it's a little bit easier because, but there is still also an incline and a curve that cars go around. Now, just putting stop signs on St. Andrews, though, is not going to resolve the issue. There are two issues on Sawyer, and has, one of them has already been mentioned. 25 miles an hour to a lot of people driving on Sawyer is a suggestion. It's not a law, and traffic speeds through there. People may say, I, personally, I don't know how many people live in St. Andrews, in the villas and in the single-family homes, and people may say, well, there's not that many people that live there, so what's the issue with a lot of traffic on Sawyer? Well, Sawyer is used not only by the residents of St. Andrews, but also for people who are coming from Cave Springs and Truman down West Clay. They come over Sawyer, Sawyer dead-ends into Bolton, and there's a lot of residences back in that area that use Sawyer as a shortcut in order to get, get home instead of going down to Gulf Way or over campus to Zumble and over. So there is a lot of traffic on Sawyer, and so the easiest resolution to preventing a major problem occurring there would be to put a four-way stop sign at that intersection. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Joe Weidner.
Okay, I'm also old people.
It's a popular category today.
Yeah. Hey, it beats not being an old people.
It's my goal in life.
So far, anyway. I'll let you know when I get to the other point. I'll come back and catch you. Mr. Klinghammer, you are our rep. I'm here against this, okay? Sometimes you just got to say no. Today was a typical day for me. I live in St. Andrews also, but I live down the other end. Today was a typical, typical day for me at that intersection. At noon, there was a man walking a dog, okay? That was it, and me, driving down Sawyer. Coming here tonight at 6:30 was me. No, nobody else. No, nobody on St. Andrews, nothing. There's just not enough traffic here for this. I understand the people in the villa, they, they want me and anybody else going on Sawyer to stop there 24/7, even though they're not going to be there. They'll be home in bed, or they'll, you know, be doing whatever. If they yield there, the majority of them make a right turn, they don't have a problem. Now, if they don't like that the median's got the grass in it, that's ours. We can get that cut down. That's their, these people that spoke here, that's their grass. We have control of that. I think it should be cut down anyway. I've lived there for seven years. I think it's crazy to have that grass there and that median. That shouldn't even be allowed to be there. It does, it hides cars coming on the other side, but if you want me to stop every day, I go through that, that intersection, a minimum of twice a day, both ways, a lot of times, four and five times a day. Now, you want me to stop there for a guy walking his dog? No, that's not right. That Sawyer's a thoroughfare, period. It is the main street. Now, if the people on St. Andrews want to make it a four-way stop, that means they want to stop, they want a stop sign. They got a yield now, but obviously, they want to make it so they have to stop. I don't know why they want to stop when they can yield, but, so apparently, they, it's okay with them if we all stop. Well, it's goofy, it's just flat goofy. Sometimes, like I said, you just got to say no. I don't want nobody getting hurt either, but cut the grass, get rid of that blind side of the other road, on the other road, side of the road, and we don't have that issue. And you can't, you shouldn't, anyway, make people that are going through, through traffic, stop. Most of the time, nobody's there, and these people would have to come up there to admit that. There's just not enough... There's just not enough car vehicle traffic to warrant that. And dog traffic, I walk my dog, too, right? You know, my dog even looks both ways. Now, that's not a joke, that's the truth. But, you know, hey, you just got to, everybody get along, but why should I go through there? And I'll be stopping at night, and early in the morning, or anytime, and nobody's going to be there. That's stupid, okay?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Any more speakers?
There's all the cards I have, but I don't know if there's...
We have one more coming. Well, this is a public hearing on traffic regulations, so you're welcome to.
My name is Jack Mudd. I live at 225 Glasgow Drive, which is right on that intersection.
Yes, sir.
My, you know, there's four houses on the intersection, I'm one of them. I lived there nine years, and in that period of time, there have been a few wrecks, there's been a lot of horn blowing and squealing of tires, and like the previous speakers have said, they exceed the speed limit. The previous speaker mentioned that you cut the grass down, you take care of the problem. Well, I don't think you would. People coming north on Sawyer are coming up a pretty good grade, and it's still pretty darn hard to see them because of the grade. And so, I'm fully for the four-way stop sign.
Thank you. Any other speakers to speak in this traffic hearing? Seeing none, we will close the traffic hearing, and we will move on to public, I'm sorry, did I miss somebody?
She doesn't want to get up to talk, that's fine. I thought there was one more, that's all right.
Is there anyone else who wants to speak on this traffic regulations? All right, so we'll move on to public comments. Just so you know, on public comments, you have three minutes to speak. When you finish the three minutes, an alarm will sound that will let you know that that is the end of your time, and I will ask you to be seated so we can move on to the next speaker. We normally do three for and three against on a particular topic. Once a subject is broached, we'll do three for, three against on that particular topic, and then we'll move on to a new topic. Carol, our first speaker of the night is?
A.C. Deanoff.
Thank you very much, members of the county council. A.C. Deanoff, public advocate and resident of St. Charles County. The first thing, here's my agenda. The first item that I'd like to talk about is on the Parks and Recreation Approval Bids. It's really unnecessary for this council to entertain $408,000 in spending for the restoration of the Hayes Home Phase II. Finally, I do give credit to the Parks Department staff for finally picking a St. Charles company, somebody located in St. Charles City. But this can be done for free with historic preservationists, just like it was done in O'Fallon for Fort Zumwalt. It can be done with volunteers and people who care about historic construction. So there's no need to spend $408,000 of taxpayer money when we could do it for free with our talented residents of over 400,000 people. Many of them believe in this and historic restoration and renovation. Also on your agenda is, let's see here, council rules. Council rules, basically, it's 42 or 46 pages of council rules, 44 pages to be exact. First of all, there's no discussion, no debate of council members. I think it's cutting down and shutting down some council members, especially the two members to my far left from districts one and two. I think sometimes the chairman wants to gavel them down and not let them talk. But if you look at the rules of St. Louis County, I think that this is a prime example of statewide rules for openness and transparency in county government. Also, citizen input and citizen information and facts needs to be looked into and made stronger for citizens, not for the council, to gavel people down for unnecessarily items. Also on your agenda is, the last item, is passage of changing of the appeals process. Currently, the county has a building review commission. That commission has lost the majority of its members. It hasn't met since December. But you're trying to take that authority and put it in the council's preview, instead of putting it in a citizen's preview to make it fair and transparent for residents who appeal administrative rulings of the community development department involving building and zoning. And finally, we're talking about the private winery on Defiance Road. There's a lot of controversy with this. Number one, public safety, which needs to be your number one priority. Number two, the minimum requirement of a 20-foot emergency access roadway. This is a swamp levy road. Three, fairness, not playing politics or playing political favors, waiving the minimum requirements for political insiders and campaign contributors. Four, we need to have fair and equal treatment of all requirements of the codified code of ordinances. Five, the eight-foot, not the minimum 20-foot requirement is unsafe after drinking a beer.
Thank you, Mr. Deanoff, that is your time. We'll move on to our next speaker tonight.
This is on Bill 4494, Bob Nolan.
Bob?
Well, you're an important guy, Bob. We move you right up there. Thank you, thank you for listening to me. My name is Bob Nolan. My wife, Luanna, and I, she's here, are the owners of Noble Eyes Vineyards, right next door to the proposed Fall Creek facility. As a matter of fact, we're 40 feet away from it and share a 1,500-foot border with it. So we are very interested in what's going on here. Noble Eyes, as well as our immediate neighbors, our nearby winery owners, are very concerned and confused by the request by the Coats in Aimfall Creek. And that's because the traditional development in this very rural area has been first agriculture, next residential, and third wineries. Other businesses in this part of the county have primarily been developed in the nearby towns, like Defiance and Augusta. This would be very inconsistent to put this facility out on Highway 94, in this ag area, next door to an existing facility. No one located anywhere near this development is in favor of it. That includes the neighbors and the business, which is basically me, because it's, this is the most rural part, and I've said this last week, too, our last meeting, it is the most rural part of St. Charles County. And it's, it would be unprecedented to put that facility right next to an existing facility. It would be damaging to that facility. I think it's damaging to the environment of the area. So we are obviously very opposed to this conditional use permit, and we ask you to vote against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Also against is Gordon Coats.
My name is Gordon Coats. First, I want to thank the, I guess, the county community development board for taking my previous comments into account and drafting the substitute bill. But when I was here at the last meeting, I know the other two bills, 4494 and 97, there was a lot of talk about sewer and septic and how, you know, that was all going to be handled, and nothing was discussed about that on this conditional use permit, 1807, for Bill 4495. And anyway, so I looked at the site plan, and I did not see any, you know, anything on the site plan where something might be located for the septic system, because there's no public sewer out there. But I can, you know, just wonder, you know, if they're going to have 280 guests, excuse me, potentially 365 days a year, you know, what the size of this thing would be, where it would be located. Depending on where it would be located, you know, definitely have a concern about runoff on my property, since the ground is, it's a very sloping ground and it's terraced. And, you know, what's the size of that thing? So, I guess in summary, you know, due to the lot size, the location, the venue type, it's not a good fit for the area. And me and my wife, we request that the council take these additional comments into account, in addition to the July 10 comments, and vote to deny the original and the proposed substitute bill. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next, bill is 4494. The first one that filed was against, and it's Dana Mosher.
Hi, thank you for taking my comments. So I live on, yeah, I wanted to just speak on the Valley Farms, that would like to have a wedding venue there. I'm not sure if we're on the same topic, are we?
Yes.
Okay, it is, okay.
Are they 4494 or 4495?
The last 4495 was.
The last two, I believe, are 4495.
Okay, and this is 4494, but this is the first one on that bill.
Okay, are we done?
I'm sorry, 4495.
Are we done with 4495?
That's the only two speakers, yes, sir.
Okay. Sorry about that.
Oh, it's okay.
Confusion on our part. So on to comments on 4494.
Okay, great.
This is you.
Thank you, okay. Can my time start over? Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
My hat is off to you, that is good.
So, yeah, I live in Big Country Acres, which is on the, kind of the tail end of Dietrich Road, which is closest to 61. I live, I've lived out there about five years now. Everyone that lives off of Dietrich Road, for the most part, lives on considerable amount of property. And, I mean, there's one little subdivision on the one end, but for the most part, all the subdivisions on Dietrich Road are people that live there, again, live on probably three-plus acres. I'm a real estate agent, so I know, and that's kind of my wheelhouse, I help folks primarily find homes on acreage, so that's really kind of the area I work and farm. So people who have bought out there, have bought out there to enjoy the peace and the quiet, and just living, not in any type of commercial development whatsoever. That is why we chose to live out there. I have an 11 and a 12-year-old, and we purposely bought on that end of Dietrich Road, so my kids didn't have to go down this windy road to get home when they get older and start driving. So when a fellow neighbor brought it to my attention that there was, Valley Farms wants to have a wedding venue out there, I mean, when we bought out there, I knew that Incline Village was there, I knew that Incline Village has wedding receptions. But, I mean, to add another venue that is going to have wedding receptions out there on Dietrich Road, which, if you don't mind, can I see a show of hands of any councilmen that have driven out there on Dietrich Road? Okay, great. So I don't know if you would agree, but, I mean, those sharp hairpin turns, windy roads, I don't see how that is conducive to safe driving, even for some people that live out there, that travel that road. I mean, there's many accidents out there, especially when it's, you know, raining or snowy conditions. So again, to add another, to add a wedding venue where people are drinking, I understand that people have been out there for, like, Pumpkin Patches. I love that farm, it's beautiful. I've been, I've brought my own kids for Pumpkin Patches there, but, and I guess they have been serving alcohol, but I don't, I've been to many Pumpkin Patches. I don't see a lot of, you know, parents that are schnockered at Pumpkin Patches, just don't, not on a Saturday or Sunday afternoon. I'm sure there is one or two, but when you put out there, you know, 200-plus folks at weddings all year round, for the most part, I just don't, I just, that's not something that people that live out there should be, just to have that. I mean, and especially going out onto Highway 61, I'm sure the county police department can speak to the treacherous conditions out there, and that is something, a kind of a question I have for you, for the county police department. I don't know how often would you get to patrol out there on Dietrich Road? I mean, I'm sure you do, I'm just saying, if there was a wedding venue out there, I would just really hope and pray that there would be extra attention paid to that area to make it safe. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
This is in support, Steven Rogers.
I would tell you, because you've sort of addressed a question, normally, for those of you who don't know, during public comments, it's your three minutes to talk on what you want to talk on, so we don't do a back-and-forth conversation. So I just wanted you to understand, the chief wasn't being rude to you, he just understands we don't normally do a back-and-forth. I just wanted people to be aware. I'm sorry, sir, your time will start now.
All right, thank you. Steve Rogers, 142 Sumac Ridge Drive, out in the Forest Hill area. Members of the council, my wife and I are here this evening and support a Bill 4494, Valley Farms, Ed and Tammy Burrier owners. As a 19-year resident of Sumac Ridge, we have known Ed and Tammy since they moved in directly across from us in 2006. We have found them to be exemplary neighbors, respectful of others, showing pride in their property and their small business, Valley Farms. In all the years we have spent at Sumac Ridge, not once have we ever been bothered by the operation of their business. We believe it to be a perfect fit for our community and applaud them for growing their business. Because we received, like many in our area, a letter from Dan Pressman in opposition of Bill 4494, we feel compelled to address comments he made. While we all certainly have a right to disagree, it must be done in a respectful manner, applying truth and factual data. We believe Mr. Pressman's letter falls short of these criteria. Instead, it reads like a personal attack, based on petty neighborhood disagreements involving barking dogs and property lines. Cleverly penned to garner an emotional response, it is also thinly veiled attempt to feed people's natural fear of change. This letter mentions impacts to roads and noise pollution, but contains no traffic surveys, no environmental impact statements, and no correct business-related numbers. In our opinion, because of lack of data, Pressman's very brief tenure as a resident and subsequent history of his poor neighbor relations, the letter offers no credibility. The actual business model put forward by Valley Farms offers a clear picture of minimal impact to our area, and it's easy to see why this business is no threat. Now, we're in the future to our semi-rural community. Small business is the bedrock of our economy, and we are confident the council will approve Bill 4494, allowing Valley Farms to prosper and grow with St. Charles County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Against is Daniel Goldberg.
I was going to be speaking in front of the...
That's fine. Next speaker.
Then we have just three more in support.
Okay.
Okay, there's going to be one more, since he didn't speak. So Dick Walsh.
Yes, sir.
My name is Dick Walsh. My wife and I have lived within a relatively short distance of Valley Farms for 10 years now. We have attended many of their events. Each and every time that we have attended, we have been welcomed in a friendly manner, personally, by Ed and Tammy. They make everyone feel at home. Their acreage is spotless. They welcome children, adults, disabled, everyone in the same way, and everyone is made to feel that they, above all, should have a wonderful time and a great experience when attending their venue. In the 10 years we have lived in our home, just off Dietrich Road, we have never witnessed or heard of any issues other than snow on the road, but weddings aren't normally held in December, and they don't plan on holding them in December. We have not heard of any public issues in regards to noise, in regards to traffic, or any other public concerns. So I'm simply speaking as a neighbor. I know Ed and Tammy, Burrier, I am not a great friend of theirs, I am simply a concerned neighbor. And I believe that the business that they are striving to enhance is a definite asset to our community. We are a rural area, and it is peaceful, and that's why my wife and I moved there. But it is a pleasure to attend their events, and I think what they plan in the future, as well as the events they've had in past years, are a definite asset to our community. That's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jane Sullivan?
Hello, my name is Jane Sullivan. I live in Incline Village, which is just right... I live in Incline Village, which is just right down the street from Valley Farms. Just to rebut some of the things the first lady said, there is actually 1,200 lots in Incline Village, which is a subdivision. There's over 600 houses in that subdivision alone right now. So, for her to say that there's mostly rural area, three-acre-plus houses or properties, is not entirely true. Me and my wife both support Valley Farms 100 percent. If it's denied any permits for ridiculous reasons that they have brought up, then Incline Village should have the permits taken away from them as well for hosting weddings. Basically, let Valley Farms proceed with life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. To respect the rule of only three speakers, to support the particular bill, I would like to close by stating that there's 20-plus supporters here in the room tonight that have similar public comments to make about the bill 4494. We all understand and appreciate the support and support what Valley Farms is doing under this bill, and we request that you pass this bill. And that is all.
Thank you.
Jason Namet.
Jason.
That was our three speakers.
Very well.
We wanted to appreciate your rule for three speakers. There are 21 other people here that if you want them to come up and say the same thing, they will.
We appreciate that. Contrary to what you've heard, repetition is not necessary here at a council meeting. We get it. Yes, ma'am. Next speaker.
They all build no cards, so they're all circled support.
Thank you.
So, that's ended on that topic?
Yes.
Okay. Then we have bill 4493, Andy Cohn.
Without being redundant from our last meeting, I just wanted to clarify one point the county made to our attorney. He mentioned that Chandler Hill was opposed to the conditional use permit because we were concerned about competition, or concerned about having a tasting facility open on the property. The truth is, we're opposed to any commercial endeavor that accesses the cabin that goes through our property. It doesn't matter if it's a winery or groomer. And we just want you all to understand that we think it's a little unfair that that liability and that cost is, put on Chandler Hill as a burden to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
In support, Drew Weber.
Good evening, members of the council, and Mr. County Executive. My name's Drew Weber with the Hamilton Weber Law Firm, and, oh, sorry, I think I clicked that. And so, I'm here on behalf of Defiance Wine Company in favor of bill 4493. We've heard a lot of talk about the adequacy of the access road and safety on the property. I mean, first of all, that is why we have a site plan approval process, right? To show the improvements on the property, and then to verify that those improvements meet county code requirements. So, we're going to comply with those, we have to comply with those. And so, all those safety concerns will be addressed at that stage. So, this stage is whether the use is appropriate, and no one has presented any evidence that the use is not appropriate in this area. I mean, the use of a private wine club in the wine country, where the county's comprehensive plan calls for agricultural tourism uses, I mean, that's a perfect fit. And, again, we haven't heard anything to indicate that it's not, because it is a perfect fit. No one disputes that. So, I don't want to waste too much time delaboring the point, I'm sure we're going to hear other comments about safety, or traffic, or whatever. So, I'm available for questions when the time comes and the bill comes up, but we just ask that you approve the conditional use permit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, Steven Cohn.
Thank you. In an effort not to be redundant, as you know, I voiced my objections to this bill previously, and I'll reserve the ability to possibly speak when the bill is voted on.
You don't want to go back and forth, attorney for attorney? Just kidding.
Only anybody wants to see that.
I don't.
Next speaker.
The last one is against Dennis Drowskowski.
Thank you, members of the council, for allowing me to speak. I'm a friend of Andy's, and I've been out to his winery quite a few times. We never really thought much about the road until this came up, and he asked me my opinion. Well, I should clarify who I am. I'm a master code professional by the ICC, and I've been in code enforcement for over 20 years. He asked me what I thought about the existing conditions on the property, and whether or not I thought that they were accessible. And I said, "Well, for a single-family residence, they're fine, but for a commercial enterprise, where you've got people that are not familiar with the area, possibly traveling after consuming alcoholic beverages, possibly in the dark with no lighting and no guardrail next to a lake, an eight-foot wide road is not adequate." Additionally, when I did the research on what your code adoption has been, you require a 20-foot road to go to a commercial establishment, and that needs to go in, if nothing for the safety of the residents and the guests and visitors that are going to be there. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it on that one. Now, this is 4496, we have Janet Rikers.
Hi, Janet.
I'm Janet Rikers, and I live in Fieldstone Estate subdivision. It sits next to the property in question. Part of our concern is that the small section of Highway Z hosts three subdivision entrances and numerous residential driveways. Because of this, the planning and zoning committee did not approve the change in zoning from residential to, like, commercial. When coming from Highway N, we have no center turn lane for our subdivision. There have been numerous rear-end collisions, some of them quite serious, some of them, and many close calls. We have learned to watch our rearview mirrors, and if someone's coming up too fast, we step on the gas and we head to Meadowbrook, which is just a few hundred feet up the road. In 2008, when I was rear-ended, the police told me they estimated the speed of the car that hit me was 70 miles per hour. His excuse, he didn't see me. More cars entering and exiting on this small stretch of rural highway will create dangerous conditions for those of us who already live there. Until improvements are made to Highway Z, this property should remain a single-family residence. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Ann Wilson.
I live at 311 Meadowbrook Estates Lane, and first of all, I'd like to say ditto to everything she said. As she mentioned, we have a multitude of entrances to various subdivisions from Z. We have an incline coming from N toward where I enter. You cannot see traffic coming the other way. We now have a grade school, which is going to increase the traffic tremendously. We have a senior living facility going in, which means that as senior living people, of which I will become one soon, they do have the right to drive their cars. So, you've got the elderly on one side, the school kids on the other, and then the high school, when they let out, those kids drive through the subdivision, and they don't stop at the stop sign when they go on Z. So, I think adding more traffic is the wrong thing to do until we get a wider road, turn lanes, and maybe stop signs or stop signals. But adding more traffic is not the way to prevent more problems. Thank you.
Thank you.
And this is 4492, we have Kathleen Lenahan.
In response to the final passage of bill 4492, I'd like to know if it's going to be policy of the St. Charles County Council to supersede the zoning and comprehensive master plans of all the municipalities that make up St. Charles County. In reviewing the planning and zoning committee's notes on the review of this bill, 4492, which is rezoning 1706, it seems to me that the city of Wentzville's comments had no bearing on the committee's decision, and I have a copy of the letter here that was included in their documents. That particular parcel is zoned for industrial uses, and properties adjacent to it also fall into that classification. The city indicated that by the county changing this to single-family residential, in the future, other conflicts may arise. The city also questioned how public water and sewer would be provided, and since their comprehensive plan is based on orderly growth from their current city limits, how is this going to be accomplished without further impact to existing residents and businesses? A greater concern to me is the county's domination of individual municipalities and their residents and businesses, who have their own vision of future growth planned. Is this the first step in St. Charles County occupation of all of our cities? I don't think the people of St. Charles County elected you gentlemen to be the supreme court of our municipalities. Our cities have their residents and businesses' best interests at heart, and they are charged with protecting our lives, our liberties, and our pursuit of happiness, a topic tonight. I personally don't want St. Charles City Council getting involved in issues that are best handled by my city. In times of emergency, or of greater economic growth for our county, then a dialogue would be appropriate, but not for rezoning of industrial land to single-family residential. As of 2012, residential zoning in Wentzville was approximately 35.5 percent of all land, with industrial zoning at 2.6 percent. We need a balance of property tax revenue and industrial sales to make for a prosperous area. One without the other will result in other areas filling the void. I urge the council not to approve this rezoning request. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last speaker is Brenda Webb.
Thank you for hearing us out, and I'm really just kind of commenting on your proposed redraft of, it looks like, your meeting rules, and I don't know if you're going to be voting on those tonight, or what, it just appeared Friday, and I had not heard anything about it before Friday, and it appeared in the agenda. And I just, you know, I have some concern, you seem to have a very open, you know, policy or whatever about, for people speaking, and we appreciate that. And I just want to express my, it would be a concern if I felt like maybe there was an attempt to shut down people, you know, citizens from being able to comment at all. And I just, I just kind of wanted to express that, you know, the First Amendment, free speech. I feel like citizens ought to be able, really, to address anything, any concern at the county council, and I just wanted to, you know, express that idea. So, thank you.
Thank you. That's it for public comments? So, that'll close public comments. We'll move on to oral report from the county executive.
None this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
I'd like to remove the council rules.
Motion's been made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Council rules has been pulled off of the consent agenda. Thank you. Do I have a motion on any other items to be removed from the consent agenda? Do I have a motion to pass the consent agenda?
Pass as amended.
Pass as amended. We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those oppose? Consent agenda is passed. Mr. Brazel, we will move on to council rules. What would you like to talk about?
Okay, I know that some of you folks have been working on this for a while, I just, and I just, there's a couple of things in here. I sent out an email, but nobody, I don't believe anybody responded to it. I don't like, there's a couple of things in here I don't like, and if you don't want to change them, then I just won't support it, that's fine, but I don't believe, when I brought this up, I think Mr. Klinghammer, maybe Mr. Cronin, but it says in here if there's not two council members in favor of supporting ordinance, that it won't get, it can't be sponsored. And I'm not sure I agree with that, and one of the comments that, by one of the council members is, "Well, what if he's crazy or off his rocker, and he puts silly stuff up there?" Well, you know, the people voted for him, and that will happen so many times until they realize that he is totally crazy and he won't get reelected, so maybe you just let it fail, you know, sort of thing. But that's one reason I don't like that, and what if you have a council member that is much more conservative than other ones and wants to put something forth, and, but he can't because there's not that sixth person on the council that agrees with his conservative perspective, or the other way around? I think that this stuff, I think it's killing the debate. So, if his, if his topic is totally off, you know, lunar crazy, then let everybody see that it's, that he's crazy. I don't think that that should be a council rule, because the people in that district elected him, and their needs may be different, so he may have different opinions on different things. So, I don't support that rule. And the other one I don't understand is on, and maybe it just, just needs some clarification, but what was that, Mike, on 31 or something, where 10 people, if there's 10 people that...
It was the exceptions to the rule, if there was a substantial change, that if there was 10 speakers in the crowd, that we could go ahead and put it on and vote on it the same night. And I had the same concern, I was going to ask the attorney if that is in contradiction to the ordinance that we already passed concerning that same subject.
Well, let me comment, I'm not as familiar with the rules as Megan Robert is. I'm quite familiar with the bill 17038 that we're talking about. I don't know that I could give you an informed answer as to whether the 17038 provision and these council rules have a conflict.
I'd ask that we just table that item until the next meeting, then when we get resolution to that question.
I, I agree, and I would also suggest possibly maybe having a work session on some of this, because I don't understand why we really need to do, make all these changes, unless I'm just missing something, but it just seems to restrict the council, what the council members were elected to do, and maybe it doesn't, but that's just, I'm just saying, I think it would, this is important where we should talk about this.
Mr. Cronin.
These rules can be changed anytime. If there's a particular portion of this that creates a problem, okay, we can go back in and fix it down the road. These rules have been to three council chairs and about four attorneys, I'm saying, started with Mr. Klinghammer when he was chair, I worked on it last year, you've worked on it now. Donna has worked on it a bunch, and Carol as well, so I think it's a good starting point. To address the situation where requiring two council members to bring an item for the county councillor's office to work, that was an intent to make efficient use of county legal resources. Coming from a small alderman, a small-town alderman, we never took anything to the county or the city attorney, because we didn't want to incur the fee unless we had a majority of the board wanting to do it. So, I think two council members are on the same page, I don't think that's, that's a, going to be any type of hindrance. Most of the time when we're working on something, you've got two or three guys already that think it's a good idea. So, I would suggest not kick the can down the road, I think we ought to get it over with, and then down the road, if you, if you think, if councillor thinks we need to do some changes to item 40 or 41, we can do that by resolution again, another time. So, is that, we got to keep, we keep going, it's been two, two, two and a half years we've been working on this, so.
Hang on, Mr. Holliday.
Yeah, in response to Councilman Brazel, you know, I really feel that if, if there's a councilman, and they have something that they want to be brought to the county councillor, I would think in 95% of the instances, you make a phone call, and I would think one of us would say, "Well, I, I support the, I might not vote for it, but I support your idea moving it forward." And I think, in my, you know, 10 years on the council, I don't think I've ever run across any situation where I couldn't find at least one person that would say, "I'm willing to listen." So, I really don't see that as being a problem, you know, and...
Well, I can give two examples. When we did Proposition S, when the counties were early legalizing properties, it was my thought that we should put a charter amendment on the floor to, to not allow the municipalities to have illegalizations, and I had very little support. The same with the red light cameras. A lot of council members thought that was an absolute crazy idea, and when we had, when we started having the debate about it, because it was on... And when we had, when we started having the debate about it, because it was on the floor, it educated more people. More people came, public came because we were talking about it. But if you stop the debate, people don't get out there and they don't know what's going on, so it never gets presented. And that's why I think that that's a bad rule. I, I, and I, if it's, you know, we, why, what's so hard about having a work session and talking about it? I mean, and seeing what the best solution is, and rather than just say, well, no, let's just pass it. That doesn't make sense, just to pass it and see how it works, kind of thing. You know, we've seen where that's taken us, so, you know.
The rules we have, though, aren't applicable anymore. They're outdated. We've got to come, do something new.
But what's another two weeks to have a work session?
Mr. Klinghammer.
Joe, I agree with you in that debate, open debate on subjects is what we're here for. What I disagree a little bit, though, is when we start talking about draft, the ability to draft ordinances and using staff time to do those, if there's absolutely, if there's only one council member that's interested in that, or thinks that that's a good idea, then it shouldn't go forward. Now, if you're asking, should one council member be allowed to put something on the agenda, then I will absolutely agree with you. We, you know, that is okay. But putting it on the agenda is different, and having the debate amongst ourselves and asking for public debate on it is completely different than what could be hours and hours of research and, and legal time of putting together an official, a full ordinance on a, on a particular subject. So I, I understand where you're coming from. It's just the dollars and cents part of it. So put it on the agenda always. Let's debate it, and then hopefully you'll convince somebody else to, that it's a good idea to spend some staff time taking it to the next step.
Right, but this doesn't say that. This doesn't say that we're afforded that ability.
You're afforded that ability now.
No, but if we pass these couns, all I'm saying is...
You'd still be afforded that ability, sir. That does not take your ability away to bring up an agenda item. You're allowed to put anything on the agenda. That does not stop it. This just says you can't go use county attorneys to draft bills that no one else knows anything about, and then throw it on other people in the council without at least getting some input from them. To Mr. Klinghammer's point, you're allowed to bring it up for public debate at any particular time. There are many a times we do work sessions on things that we don't have bills on, and we do work sessions to do exactly what you're talking about, to have public input, to have council discussion, and to do it in a formal setting. One of the things, when you said, am I missing anything here? I would say yes. I would say that because in our current council rules, it refers to us having the county clerk do things. The county clerk has not been involved with this office in a very long time. So our current council rules are completely wrong. They don't have the way that we do business right now formatted out correctly. It's all completely wrong in how our current council rules sit. So the last two chairmen have worked on this. We've had, what, Megan, are you the third attorney to work on this, or the fourth attorney to work on this? You have had these council rules, Joe, brought back to you a minimum of five times, asking for input, and asking for changes, and asking for anything to be done. We have done that ti, we have refined these things to the nth degree. So I think it's a little disingenuous on your part to say, hey, all of a sudden I have a problem with this. Well, you've had over two years to have a problem with anything worked out, and obviously you haven't got it worked out to your satisfaction, but I think as a body, we're pretty well there.
Well, wait a minute, Michael. We just got this email, so several weeks ago, and I did send out an email, and none of you responded, so don't say that. And second of all, there's a bunch of stuff in here. No topic shall exceed 18 minutes. So you're telling the public, we're only talking about this at 18 minutes. That's it. We're not going to continue talking. Or it goes into, total of six speakers shall be allowed and bold, so you can't amend the agenda like we have in the past?
We've amended every agenda, and that is still the rule.
But it's, if you follow these rules...
Joe, that's our standard operating procedure. You have to set out rules. These are the rules.
But then why are you, why are we even putting, so that's what I'm saying, that's why we should have a work session.
These...
I make a motion that we keep this tabled and have a work session on this, this council rules.
Well, it's not, it's not tabled right now.
Then I make a motion to table it.
We have a motion to table it. Or, John's going to second it. All those in favor to table it?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
No. So let's do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Cronin?
I vote to not table.
Councilmember Brazel?
I want to table it.
Councilmember Hammond?
No.
Councilmember Ehlum?
No.
Councilmember Hollander?
No.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Motion fails.
Okay.
That's four to three.
No, that's fine.
Four noes.
Four noes, three yeses, so it's not tabled.
Correct. It's currently removed from the agenda for discussion.
So we have it still on the floor.
Okay.
Do we have a motion to vote?
I would make... I have a question, then.
Yes, sir.
The specific part that talks about if there's 10 people that, that were in the audience, when, when did that come about? I don't recall seeing that.
Mr. Cronin.
I don't recall that being put in when I worked on it.
I don't know where that part came from.
Megan might be the best person to ask about that. Is that in Rosenberg, maybe? Or is that in Joanne?
That's part of your, of the bill that's, that's current, before, that's part of the ordinance before the council, that if you want a substitute bill...
Right.
You have to have it to the council office prior to 8 o'clock on Thursday.
There's those exceptions.
And then there's, that is part of the exception to that ordinance.
That is in the ordinance now.
So that's why it's incorporated to the rules.
I withdraw my concern on that.
I have a copy of it, if you need to see it, council member.
I'm good. Thank you. Mr. White.
I think since there is some concern about this among, even if it's just one council member, I think we should have, you know, afford him the right to have a work session on this, so, so we really look at it and thoroughly, we all thoroughly understand it. I know we've been working on this a long time, but I don't see the urgency in trying to vote on it tonight. I think we should have a work session on it, and just every one of us review it, discuss it among ourselves, and then vote on it. So I moved, I moved to table it, and I asked for a recall vote.
Yeah.
I would make a suggestion.
Yes, sir.
If Joe has concerns and John has concerns, okay, why can't we just put that as a separate resolution for the next meeting and tweak it and get this thing moving forward? Okay? I know we've had work sessions before, because I called them, okay? And I know what it's like to chair with that, with an antiquated set of rules that doesn't really apply. So in fairness to Mr. Ehlum, I would just soon pass this the way it is. If you guys have concerns, let's get them together with Megan Roberts and see if we can address them at the next meeting, make a second resolution, amend the rules again. Because, because that's better than what we've got now. We've got something from the 90s that's not applicable to how we, how we do business, and it also is difficult for the chair to properly conduct business when you're dealing with rules that, that aren't made to apply how we do business now. That's my opinion.
That's one problem, though, Michael, we're being getting into, is we, we quickly passing these things and then having a hodgepodge of problems with our ordinances and stuff without thoroughly going through it. And that's the other thing. And I'm not saying, there's, there's nothing too much major about this stuff, but I mean, if there was a committee working on this stuff, and then you guys gave it to us, what, two weeks ago or something? And then I did send out an email, but none of you guys responded to the question. And so why is this so important, like at this very minute? Why is this an emergency to pass, for God's sakes? Why, if we're going to have some other issues on a work session, why can't this be a brief topic of conversation?
So we've been working on this for two years to get this done.
But you guys just sent out the draft. You, you just sent out the draft two weeks ago or something.
This is the, but this is the latest draft.
Okay.
The draft hasn't changed much from when I did it.
Mr. Chair, this is just what I'm talking about. We're trying to have a work session right now, and it's improper.
I think we are.
I think we should have a work session on it, and I ask for a recall vote.
I support second John's motion.
All those in favor of a recall vote?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Uh-oh.
No.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Councilmember Cronin?
No.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
No.
Councilmember Ehlum?
No.
Councilmember Hollander?
No.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
We're back to where we were.
All right, just let's go.
I make a motion to approve.
Motion's been made to approve in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
No.
How about a roll call vote? Since you're going to speak out of order anyway.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
No.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Motion is approved. We have new council rules. We can discuss any changes that you want to discuss, and we can even do a work session on anything that you want to bring forward, but we currently have rules that are actually in place. Mr. Cronin.
I will personally meet with Megan Roberts and you to work through anything you've got to do. How's that?
Thanks, Joe. I appreciate it.
All right. Move down to bills for final passage, starting with 4492.
Bill number 4492, an ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from A agricultural district to RR single-family residential district as per application RZ 1706.
Any questions or comments on this bill? Mr. Cronin.
The only opposition I was aware of until the speaker tonight was from the marshals who have property next door. So Mr. Bates, their concern is they have farmland there about runoff and erosion from the construction activities. I told them the county's got pretty stringent regulations of that, but they're good neighbors, and they don't have a problem with it as long as you guys keep erosion under control. The lady that spoke and regards Wentzville, I deal with Wentz, city Wentzville a lot. It's not, probably a week goes by, I don't talk to the mayor of Wentzville, and this isn't in the Wentzville. This is in St. Charles County. Why it's, why it's in Wentzville's land use plan is agricultural, or I'm sorry, industrial. It's not being developed industrial in that area. It's more residential. The industrial area is going over by the new warehouse closer to GM plant. So I'm in support of this, because I think it's a very good development. I'm familiar, Ms. McMenamy from other projects and other subdivisions done. It'll be a first-class subdivision, and I think it's also a good fit for the area that you've got some higher density and you've got some real low-density residential. And most people, the neighbors out there, would much rather have a nice first-class subdivision than they would an industrial park next to their homes. So that's all I have to say on this one.
Any other questions or comments about this bill? Seeing none?
An ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from A agricultural district to RR single-family residential district as per application RZ 1706. Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Substitute bill 4492 passes. We'll move on to bill 4493.
Bill number 4493, an ordinance granting conditional use permit CUP 1705 for a private club for wine education and wine experience to John J. Schellington Jr. and Jacqueline R. Schellington, property owners, and Defiance Wine Company LLC applicant.
Mr. Brazel.
Yes, thank you, guys. I am in support of this, this, this conditional use permit. This is a private club, and like Mr. Cronin brought up, a great point last time, that there's a lot of private duck clubs up north and on the river that do similar things. They shoot ducks, but they do drink, too. So, you know, it's, it's, I see no problem with this. It's a good fit for the wine country. The other, some of the other matters that are brought in up is not, does not concern what they're applying for, and community development will work through any of the plot plan issues and development issues. So I am in support of this.
Any other questions or comments about this bill?
I, I would just also comment, if you ever drive down to other private clubs, like the duck clubs and so forth, they don't have 20-foot roads and, and right of ways, so I, I am supportive of this bill also.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none?
An ordinance granting conditional use permit CUP 1705 for a private club for wine education and wine experience to John J. Schellington Jr. and Jacqueline R. Schellington, property owners, and Defiance Wine Company LLC applicant. Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Bill number 4493 passes. Move on to bill 4494.
Bill number 4494, an ordinance granting conditional use permit CUP 1706 for rural recreational activity and a facility for weddings, wedding receptions, and other events to Edward and Tammy Barrio, property owners.
Any questions or comments on this bill?
I think Mr. Barrio would like to speak, and I also believe the attorney would like to speak for them, gentlemen.
Well, I understand that, isn't there a substitute bill for this?
Correct.
I'm sorry about that. We have to get the business taken care of. I'd like to make a motion to amend bill number 4494 and replace with substitute bill number 4494.
Motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second is made. Any discussion on this bill?
Now we can... Now we can go into discussion. Do you want to start with those folks?
That's fine.
Okay.
Do you want to start with the attorney?
Sir, would you like to come forward?
Yes.
Good evening. My name's Daniel Goldberg. I'm an attorney here in town, and I represent Dan Pressman and his wife Kathleen Walsh, who live at 150 Sumac. And of all the speakers this evening, they are the only ones that have bought the property upon which this conditional use permit is, has been applied for. We have several reasons that we are opposed to this conditional use permit. opposed to this conditional use permit. The first of which is, there are four other venues along Dietrich Road that do have similar business interests, and therefore, we don't believe that, at the outset, there's a public necessity to have this particular conditional use permit granted. Secondly, and very importantly, we do question, and I'm just going to tell you this straight out, Mr. Bariou's business practices. He has had a pumpkin patch. We have, and he's served alcohol at the pumpkin patch. We have looked to see if he's had any conditional use permits. We could find none. Secondly, when he erected this pole barn back in December of two thousand and sixteen, there was no mention of any intended business use for this pole barn, other than being used as a pole barn. So, again, we question the business practices. Secondly, we believe that his advertising that's currently on the Internet is deceptive. If you, if you look at, and we have, the parcel here is the Valley Farms parcel that Mr. Pressman has indicated to you, it's twenty-point-six-seven acres. However, what he is doing is he's advertising that his venue for these weddings is going to be on attractive ground. That's twenty-five acres. And again, Mr. Pressman has all of these, he's pulled this off the Internet, and we have, if you would like to look at these before you vote, we have handouts.
We have them.
All right. And also, again, and again, which we believe is not, is below board, is when he has, he's showing photo opportunities of people getting married on this venue. But what he is showing is, is it's not on the Valley Farms parcel. It's on either property belonging to Incline Village or on what we call the triangle property, which is not part of the property that is being applied for with the conditional use permit. Our main concern is the noise and Mr. Pressman's potential decrease of his property value. That's why we're here. The pole barn in and of itself has roll-up garage doors, barn doors, and so although he can say that those, that this pole barn would insulate Mr. Pressman's property from noise, in reality, these are, this is a structure where the garage doors can be rolled up, the barn doors opened, and a lot of noise can come from any event at his property. Finally, the bill as it's structured only entails weddings. It doesn't entail reunions. It doesn't entail any other event that might take place on this property. So, if this bill is passed, we would call for more stringent requirements. We would call for not more than a hundred guests being at this venue. And the music ending earlier than ten-thirty, we would like some other parameters in here that if, in fact, there is music or something like that, that these garage doors be closed, the barn doors be closed, again, to insulate Mr. Pressman and his property from any potential adverse consequences. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cronin?
Just a point of clarification here, and this is in the staff report. This property got a CUP in two thousand and three for a farm stand, two thousand and five for a commercial farm stand, and also a one in two thousand and nine for a campground. He's also had a liquor license since, I believe, two thousand and fourteen. Okay? I've really done my homework on this one. I've been out, I've been to the neighbors. I've done all I can do to find out on it. Okay? This gentleman, the applicant, has pretty much been restricted to death already. County staff put some pretty significant restrictions on him, which he agreed to. The neighbors asked for some restrictions, which he agreed to. Planning and zoning commission asked for some restrictions, which he agreed to. I put an additional restriction in the substitute bill to stop the music on weddings at ten-thirty. Under his, he wanted that in there because to try to make the neighbors. So, I believe the reason you see the support of twenty-some-plus neighbors here is this gentleman not only a good neighbor, but he's really, really tried hard to make as many people as he could happy in this, in this area. That being said, I think it's only fair that, you know, that he gets to come up and speak as well.
Very well. Thank you, sir.
And I would, I would, I believe that some of the first two, the conditional use permits may have expired. I am not sure about that. I have, I did not see.
They're listed in the stat and report if you'd like to read. It's on our agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Come on up. Mr. Cronin?
Yes, sir. This is Ed Bariou. This is the proprietor of Valley Farms. Okay?
Do you have a question for him?
I think I'd like to hear his side of the story a little bit, too.
Yeah, sure. I mean, I don't know how much of that you want me to address because there's, it's just all inaccurate. There, let me just read my statement if you don't mind.
Sure.
"In two thousand and three, my wife and I applied for a conditional use permit for our pumpkin patch. In two thousand and five, we updated the permit to allow us to operate year-round. For fourteen years, we've been hosting visitors at our pumpkin patch. It was not uncommon to have two hundred visitors right up to closing time. There has never been a traffic incident in fourteen years we have operated, and never a single noise complaint. Over time, more and more folks asked if we hosted weddings. At that time, I was working another full-time job and was unable to take on that kind of venture. Then in two thousand and fifteen, a wedding planner approached us and asked if we could donate the use of our property for a wounded warrior wedding. We agreed right away and started the planning process. The first priority was to work with our neighbors. My wife, Tammy, wrote a letter and hand-delivered one, this was back in two thousand and fifteen, hand-delivered one to every neighbor in the area. The note explained what we were doing, and every neighbor supported it. We contacted St. Charles County Police Officer Sergeant Kevin Jett with the Bureau of Field Operations for that area. Mr. Officer Jett came out to visit, and we discussed the details of the wedding, and I asked about the laws or noise restrictions that would not allow this event. He had no laws against it, and the message to me was, in general, noise would not be a problem until midnight on weekends. Officer Jett thanked us for involving him and said he would, we could contact him with any issues. My wife, Tammy, was much more concerned about the noise than the St. Charles County Sheriff's Department was. The night of that wedding, on November eighth, two thousand and fifteen, my wife, Tammy, drove from house to house along Sumac and along Dietrich Road, stopped her car, and listened for music. She could not hear it in front of any of the houses on Sumac. We received no complaints about the event. The event was so successful, we decided to try just a couple weddings in two thousand and sixteen to check the validity of the plan before investing six figures in this venture. In preparation for the two thousand and sixteen weddings, we invited out a professional DJ service, several, and several caterers to discuss noise control and logistics. The night of those two weddings, my wife sat up at the house about fifteen hundred feet away on an elevated bluff, right next door to Mr. Pressman, and closer than Mr. Pressman, with less obstructions than Mr. Pressman as far as tree lines and distance, with a, with a straight, unobstructed view of the venue. We used walkie-talkies and worked with the DJ to adjust the music volume. She could still hear the music, but it was not disruptive or unreasonable level. These weddings were held intense, which does not hold sound very well, which makes noise control more challenging. Those two weddings were a great success, and we eventually made the decision to get into the wedding business. Noise levels and neighbors was still our biggest concern. For that reason, and a few logistics reasons, we decided to build an indoor venue so we could acquire, so we acquired a county permit to build the barn. In January twenty seventeen, during construction of our building, I invited Wentzville Fire Protection District out to visit to ensure the safety of our guests and to ensure we are compliant. In early February, I contacted my local county councilman, Mr. Joe Cronin, to see if there were any additional county requirements. Joe took the time to ask questions, explain the process, and put me in touch with Director of Community Development, Mr. Robert Myers. Mr. Myers scheduled a one-stop, which you're all familiar with, where several folks come out and take a look at what needs to be done, for the site. A total of six directors and support staff from St. Charles County Government visited the location. We talked through what was, would be needed. I made note of all the additional requirements and submitted a site plan showing these. As another note, this is not in my statement, but that site plan specifically says that I'm not going to use the triangle. And so, other than that, nobody's, his property does not abut to this venue property. Absolutely not. There's three acres in between it, with two tree lines on that, on that. I worked very closely with the community development, building code enforcement, Wentzville Fire Protection, health and, and health services to ensure all the requirements were being addressed. I also presented all the self-imposed restrictions we developed by working with the neighbors, which eventually became part of the bill. That was another concession we made for the, for the complainant. Based on those discussions and based on the fire inspector's requirements, we have invested and continue to invest tens of thousands of dollars more to ensure that we are compliant in every way, shape, or form. We also, once again, reached out to our neighbors in preparation for this conditional use permit update. In addition to the planning and zoning notification process, I personally wrote letters or visited every neighbor within fifteen hundred feet of the venue building. Mr. Pressman is nineteen hundred feet away from the, from the venue building. There are seventeen other houses closer than Mr. Pressman, and they all support us or certainly aren't against us. I provided them with details of our plans and informed them of many restrictions we will be operating under. We also invited them all to an open house on May twenty-first to check out the venue and express any concerns they may have had. I also asked them to invite their neighbors and friends. We had over thirty people attend, and it turned into a great social event. Each and every one of them expressed their support. We were also copied on seventeen of the support letters that the, that the council received on this, signed by twenty-five different supporters. We hope there were many others that we did not receive that you guys got. There is also a packet with a, it's supposed to be pumpkin orange, but it's a little bright, brighter than I expected. But there's a packet there with a cover letter that lists fifty-three, and actually fifty-six since I printed that, because one actually came in this morning and a couple came in this weekend. Names in support of us. Some have written letters. Some are here tonight. The first opposition we received was from Dan Pressman. We made several attempts to try to meet with him to understand and address his concerns, but with no luck. So, we worked with planning and zoning, and we made additional concessions in attempt to address his concerns. At least one of these concessions included not having ceremonies on our adjacent property. He showed pictures of that. We have never had a ceremony yet. Those were people that were taking pictures on my property. There was no trespassing. That property belongs to me, and I should be able to take a picture of anybody that I want on that property, and I should be able to stand down there with my wife without being videotaped by Mr. Pressman. That's how he gets those pictures. And he's also using a telephoto lens to take pictures of me and my wife on our private property. Back to the notes. "It is our property and is one of the most beautiful and secluded parts of our property, and can only be seen by Mr. Pressman's video camera that is hanging over the side of his cliff that is pointing at our property. You may have seen one of the photos. We saw several of them tonight. On the, on the cliffside is blah, blah, blah." The concession that we made will have the biggest adverse impact to our business, more than any other concession that I, that we made. And it was, and it was one that we did not want to make. It hampers our ability to sell our venue and compete with many other venues that have the popular water features. Although the ceremonies are virtually silent, short, and held in the middle of the day, we thought and hoped this concession, along with all the other concessions, would alleviate Mr. Pressman's concerns. After the July tenth meeting, when I extended my hand to Mr. Presson, he shook my hand and said, we look forward to, and I said, we look forward to sitting down with you. Dan thanked us. His wife stated she wanted to be neighborly. That, along with Mr. Cronin's outreach to Mr. Pressman to get us all together, made us feel pretty good about everything. Little did we know that thirty-six hours later, I have a postmarked envelope that has the time that it got to the, got to the mailbox. Thirty-six hours later, he had hundreds, maybe thousands, of letters at post offices to be sent to residents on or near Dietrich Road. Nothing wrong with him exercising his rights, but the letter contained mistruths, misleading information, and was rather slanderous to me as a person and a businessman. It was then we realized there is nothing we will be able to do to accommodate this person. We did receive a few calls of concern that was generated by Mr. Pressman's letter. In each case, once they received the facts, and we discussed and addressed the concerns, they all supported us. Tammy and I strongly feel that we have gone above and beyond what most businesses would do to be in harmony with the neighbors and the community. And we will also be the most restricted venue in the area. For these reasons, I request you vote yes on this bill, and let me get back to making a living and get back to my pumpkin patch and get ready for the two thousand and seventeen season. Thank you so much for your time.
Any other questions or comments?
I think that's pretty wraps it up, I think.
Anybody else got questions or comments? So, we have a motion made from the substitute bill. We have a second. All those in favor of this amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose? So, the amendment is accepted. We'll call the roll on the vote.
An ordinance granting conditional use permit CUP seventeen oh six for a rural recreational activity and a facility for weddings, wedding reception, and other events to Edward and Tammy Bariou, property owners. Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Bill number forty-four ninety-four, substitute bill forty-four ninety-four has passed. We'll move on to bill forty-four ninety-five.
An ordinance-
Man is a liar.
An ordinance granting conditional use permit CUP seventeen oh eight for a rural recreational activity and a facility for weddings, wedding receptions, and other public assemblies to G. Richard Coats and Sharon K. Coats, Revocable Living Trust, property owners, and Fall Creek Weddings LLC applicant.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to amend bill number forty-four ninety-five and replace it with substitute bill forty-four ninety-five.
Second.
Motion's made and second. Any questions or comments on this bill?
We're on forty-four ninety-five.
We are.
And this is for the substitute?
It is.
Thank you.
Hey, guys in the back, you may want to know that the screen is not working right.
Yeah, that's what I, I was, okay.
Did you have a question or comment about?
No, let's get, no, on the substitute bill, I'm in favor of putting that forward, yes.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions or comment or any discussion about this bill?
I do. Okay.
That's why I looked at you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. I was, me, I was distracted.
It's okay.
On this bill, forty-four ninety-five, this rural recreational activity on Hem Sath Road, it's not a good fit for the area. The speaker, Mr. Coats, is correct. It's on thirteen acres. No, there will be no live-on residents. There will be no agricultural activity. They're building a church. They're building a wedding reception. It takes away the value of the we, of the wineries. So, I am absolutely opposed to this. The wineries are opposed to this. The, the community in, in general are not in favor of this bill, so I will not be supporting this bill.
Mr. Cronin?
I won't support either based on planning and zoning's denial. I think planning and zoning did a good job of vetting this. I don't, I think I would support the decision of planning and zoning.
Any other questions or comments on this bill? We have a motion made and second. All those in favor of accepting, accepting the substitute, say aye.
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 All those oppose? Substitute is accepted. Call the roll on the vote, please.
An ordinance granting conditional use permit CUP seventeen oh eight for a rural recreational activity and a facility for weddings, wedding receptions, and other public assemblies to G. Richard Coats and Sharon K. Coats, Revocable Living Trust, property owners, and Fall Creek Weddings LLC applicant. Councilmember Hollander?
No.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
No.
Councilmember White?
No.
Councilmember Cronin?
No.
Councilmember Brazel?
No.
Councilmember Hammond?
No.
Councilmember Elam?
No. Bill number, substitute bill forty-four ninety-five has failed. We move on to bill forty-four ninety-six.
Bill number forty-four ninety-six, an ordinance granting conditional use permit CUP seventeen oh nine for a preschool indoor daycare center to Leonard Kirkendall and Josie Kirkendall, property owners, and Tyke Town Development Center Incorporated applicant.
Mr. Brazel?
Yes. The last meeting, I misspoke because I, I was thinking that this was probably a good use for the property. But since then, I've spoke to most of the residents. I've got a lot of phone calls. I talked to the president of HOA. And there's also pointed out, I had Don or Carol reached out to MoDOT, and MoDOT said that they would not give permission from, MoDOT would not give permission from access in Highway Z. They said they would have to access it from Meadow, Meadowbrook subdivision. And Meadowbrook subdivision owns that strip of property, so they're not going to get permission from Meadowbrook. So, this is not a good use of this property, so I don't support it.
Very well. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none? Call the roll.
An ordinance granting conditional use permit CUP seventeen oh nine for a preschool indoor daycare center to Leonard Kirkendall and Josie Kirkendall, property owners, and Tyke Town Development Center Incorporated applicant. Councilmember Klinghammer?
No.
Councilmember White?
No.
Councilmember Cronin?
No.
Councilmember Brazel?
No.
Councilmember Hammond?
No.
Councilmember Elam?
No.
Councilmember Hollander?
No.
Bill number forty-four ninety-six fails. Move on to bill number forty-four ninety-seven.
An ordinance granting conditional use permit CUP seventeen dash ten for a facility for weddings, wedding receptions, and other public assemblies and a rural recreational activity to Michael Kainman and Karen Kainman, property owners.
Any questions or comments on this bill?
There's a substit-
We're on bill.
Forty-four ninety-seven.
Correct.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to, to amend substitute bill, or introduce substitute bill forty-four ninety-seven to replace the current bill forty-four ninety-seven.
So, a motion's made to amend substitute bill, or bill forty-four ninety-seven with substitute bill forty-four ninety-seven. We have a second. Any discussion on this?
Yes, I would like to have a little discussion on it, then offer to table this bill. We have to do a little work on this. I'm not much in favor of Mr. Cronin, or the bill that we passed.
Thanks.
The recreational activity is in conflict with the wineries, and, and I would prefer that we just got, totally got rid of it. However, like Mr. Cronin said, there are needs, like the one we just passed, there are needs. And so, we have to figure out how we're going to do this. And I had a meeting earlier with staff today, and, so, we need to work through some of these issues to see what we want to do with it, to see how it can fit the county, if it can, where it works with the wine district and, and with the, did you want to say something, Mike? Am I on the wrong bill?
This is the Kainman bill for that wedding facility on Terry Road.
Oh, I am sorry. Gosh. I'm sorry. Oh, no, I'm so sorry. I, I am. I'm on the, I was wanting to talk about, I am so sorry. Okay. Sorry about that. Terry Road. Sorry, guys.
All right. So, does anyone have any comments about this?
I do. I do, too, and I apologize.
Well, let's start over again.
I was reading the, okay, I'm sorry. This bill, the applicants bought an old farm and did a lot of work to it. They're going to live on site. They have agriculture activity going on. It's a small venue, and I am in support of this bill. There was, it passed by planning and zoning. There was zero complaints, zero constituents had anything opposition to say. So, yes, I'm in favor of this bill.
Any other questions or comments on forty-four ninety-seven? Seeing none, we have a motion for accepting substitute bill forty-four ninety-seven and a second. All those in favor of accepting this bill?
Aye.
All those oppose? The bill is accepted. We'll call the roll.
An ordinance granting conditional use permit CUP seventeen ten for a facility for weddings, wedding receptions, and other public assemblies and a rural recreational activity to Michael Kainman and Karen Kainman, property owners. Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Substitute bill forty-four ninety-seven passes. We'll move on to bill forty-four ninety-eight.
Bill number forty-four ninety-eight, an ordinance amending section four oh five point oh eight zero C of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSCCMO, to authorize certain meeting facilities as well as rural recreational activity as conditional uses in the A agricultural zoning district on sites of not less than twenty acres.
Would you like to amend a substitute bill?
Yeah, I'd like to offer a substitute, I'd like to offer substitute bill forty-four ninety-eight.
Substitute's been made and second. Now, we'll do the discussion.
Now, sorry, I'll just, just what I said last time.
Everything that he said before applies now.
Okay, we got it.
Yeah. Yeah, so, we need to work on this bill, so I'm going to make a motion to table.
We need to accept it first. Is there any other discussion on this bill? Motion been made for a substitute bill to forty-four ninety-eight and seconded. All those in favor of accepting the substitute, say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose?
No.
It is accepted. Now, would you like to make a motion to table this bill?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to table, and like I said before, staff is going to work out some, we got some things they got to work through, and I suggest that whenever we're ready at the time, we have a work session- we're ready at the time, we have a work session on this to figure out how we're going to work through this.
So a motion's been made to table. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made to table and a second. All those in favor of tabling this bill, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The bill is tabled. We'll move on to bill 4499.
Bill number 4499, an ordinance approving execution of cost apportionment agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission and the City of St. Peters for improvements on Route 364 in the area of Mid Rivers Mall Drive.
Hey, we don't have a substitute bill for 4499. How did that happen?
Did we get mixed up with that?
Joe, do you have any questions or comments about 4499?
No, I'm good.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments? Seeing none?
An ordinance approving execution of cost apportionment agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission and the City of St. Peters for improvements on Route 364 in the area of Mid Rivers Mall Drive. Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Ilum?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Bill number 4499 passes and move on to bill 4500.
Bill number 4500, an ordinance amending chapter 605 of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSCCMO, related to licensed security officers and authorizing use of the county law enforcement training center firing range for the Eastern Missouri Police Academy.
Any questions or comments about this bill? Seeing, oh, I'm sorry, Dave.
Would we be charging anything for the use of the range?
Who would like to speak on that? Well, the chief would, of course.
Yes, they will, the academy will be charged because it's not a law enforcement agency. It's a private entity. But obviously, we have a vested interest in working with the academy. So yes, they will be charged. And I, don't take me-
It's the direct cost, though.
It's the direct cost, and I want to say it's $900 a day for them using the, the range.
Thank you very much.
Any, oh, sorry.
Went by there today, chief, and it was busy. There was an awful lot of folks down there.
It never closes. All of, you know, the one lady spoke of the municipalities. We service, they use it also.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none?
An ordinance amending chapter 605 of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSCCMO, related to licensed security officers and authorizing use of the county law enforcement training center firing range for the Eastern Missouri Police Academy. Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Ilum?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Bill number 4500 passes. Move on to bill 4501. Bill 4501, an ordinance authorizing the county executive or his designee to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the City of O'Fallon, Missouri, related to use of the county emergency operations center for dispatch and 911 services during the city's move to a new building.
Any questions or comments on 4501? Seeing none?
An ordinance authorizing the county executive or his designee to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the City of O'Fallon, Missouri, related to use of the county emergency operations center for dispatch and 911 services during the city's move to a new building. Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Ilum?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Bill number 4501 passes. On to bill number 4502.
Bill number 4502, an ordinance amending section 405.510 of the ordinances of the St. Charles County, Missouri, OSCCMO, and adding new section 405.511 of OSCCMO concerning the administrative review hearing process for conditional use permit application decisions.
Any questions or comments on 4502?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to offer substitute bill 4502 to replace the current bill 4502.
Motion's made and second.
Second.
Any discussion on 4502? Seeing none, a motion's been made and second to accept substitute bill 4502. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The bill is accepted. Please call the roll.
An ordinance amending section 405.510 of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSCCMO, and adding new section 405.511 of OSCCMO concerning the administrative review hearing process for conditional use permit application decisions. Councilmember Ilum?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Bill number 4502 passes. We have no tabled bills, miscellaneous announcements by anyone. I would like to personally thank Mr. Cronin for all of the efforts that he put in on the council rules, although it may not have been that most popular decision that we've made tonight. I would also like to thank Megan Robert, because I feel like ever since she walked into the councilor's office, she has been dealing with council rules. So she probably knows more about council rules than she ever wanted to know, but I thank you very much for all of the time and effort that you put into that. Anybody else got anything for the good of the order? I would entertain a motion to dismiss.
Motion.
Motion made. Do you have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
We are dismissed.